Alright, good evening everyone. Today is March twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. The Hyde Park Central School District Board of Education. At this time can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing tenure, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or persons and a collective bargaining negotiations pursuant to Article fourteen of the civil service law and to discuss privileged information with legal counsel.
So moved. Second.
Well, this is paper. I propose motion carried. We're now in executive seven.
Okay.
Afternoon.
All right, I'd like to uh. Like to return to open session.
No.
Uh, can we please rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, we do have some agenda modifications. So, um, we're gonna have. Uh, we need to modify, do I read these out now what we're modifying and then our four point two is to.
Take the motion.
Okay, so we do need to modify the agenda by removing items eleven point three and eleven point four from the agenda. So that's the announcement, then we move on to four point two. Can I have a motion to amend tonight's agenda?
So moved, Margaret.
Second, Margaret.
All those in favor? Uh, opposed? Motion carried. And then I would like to get a motion to adopts, adopt tonight's agenda as amended.
So moved, Margaret.
Okay, Christine.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. So now we have the, they're removed under below, right?
They're, they're below because they can't take math till after.
You'll tell me what goes to skip, all right?
Sure.
Okay, upcoming events, Friday, April fourth, we have our K through twelve, two hour delay. Uh, SPL. What does that mean? I don't know.
Staff professional learning day.
Professional Learning Day, um, that's all schools and see the schedule for the school. Um, we also have, uh, H, HMS Musical, and that's at the Auditorium at Havilin at seven PM. And we also have the Junior Prom at FDR. And but no time is listed, but I'm sure you know what time it is. Uh, Saturday, April fifth, we have the Havilin Musical again at the Auditorium, and that one's at two PM.
The play is Shrek that they're doing.
And the play is Shrek.
Forgot to put it in there.
Are you, are you playing? Shrek. Wednesday, April ninth, um, there's a Hyde Park Education Foundation meeting at HPE that's at six PM. And on Thursday, April tenth is our, our next board meeting. That's at FDR, uh, that'll begin at seven PM. Any other upcoming events that anyone would like to mention? All right, moving on to Pride. You're up, please. You don't have charts, right, or do you?
So at North Park, they held an Underground Spirit Week in which like the staff members in the community dressed up and kind of didn't let anyone know besides, you know, themselves, and then the students kind of started to figure out by like noticing how everyone was wearing similar things like tie dye. Um, so there was a lot of fun, and then once they caught on, they tried guessing, so I think it was really a good way for them to interact with the staff. Um, at Ralph Bar, the fourth graders organized a wax museum. Yesterday, um, there was family, staff members and students that spent time moving around the room to learn about the importance throughout history. Um, at Havilin, uh, Mr. Shaw would like to thank everybody who made the Ninth Annual Havilin Middle School Community Night an incredible success. It was a fantastic evening filled with connection, fun and support from HMS families. They were honored to host over thirty community partners who provided value for service information. Um, families were able to enjoy free pasta and meatball dinner. Um, students also participated in activities like face painting and fresh fruit quilt making with the help of the art teachers and studio art students. There was also a game room, game room hosted by, uh, Ms. Stewart Ong. An engaging demonstration from the Lab Dance Complex and the Hyde Park Lacrosse Crew. Um, a heartfelt thank you to more than fifty faculty volunteers who generously gave their time and energy to make this event so special. Their dedication does not go unnoticed. And they truly appreciate all the support for the students and families. So thank you for making this a community I want to remember. At Violet Avenue, the first graders in Ms. Dykes and Ms. Toils and Ms. De, Ms. Delone's class visited the Bart about and to see a theatrical performance of Runway Bunny and Goodnight Moon. Uh, this was to support their ELA and SEL curriculum. Also, Ms. Uh, Conkle, Con, Conklin and Ms. Silva's second grade class had their nonfiction celebration where they showed off their animal reports to staff and parents. And then also the fourth graders in Ms. Gill and Ms. Delone and Ms. on, on Coese's class learned about the American history and the impact that FDR had on shaping our country, our rights and government as part of their social studies curriculum, uh, in which they also visited the FDR estate. Students were very eager to learn about FDR's presidency and how the Roosevelts helped establish rights and liberties. Um, at Netherwood, they had their BART Week, um, in which they had various activities over the last three days. As you know, there was an author visit from a previous, um, student, a book fair, Spirit Week, and other activities that connect to reading. They also were lucky to have a visit from Joey, a therapy dog. And then lastly, at FDR, the class of twenty five held Mr. President on Friday the twenty first. It was a great success and congratulations to Mr. President Julian Pritchard. And then today, uh, musicians from the Hudson Valley Symphony Orchestra came to work with the band and orchestra students. I myself was able to attend that. It was a period's one divorce. It was an in-school field trip in which they helped to, um, help us become better in our pieces that we will be performing in our May concerts.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, we are highlighting Angelo Cabrillas as our Artist of the Month this year. I mean, this, tonight. Angelo is a third grader at Ralph R. Smith. He's a sculpturist. As you can see, he's holding two of his sculptures. And he says what he loves about art is that you can let your imagination run wild. Um, congratulations, Angelo. And next we have our Musician of the Month, Olivia Gobres. She is another one fifth grader. We are highlighting her and celebrating her tonight because she is not only is she a musicianist, uh, she is also, uh, representing Hyde Park School District and Netherwood at the, the upcoming Elementary All County Festival. And she will be playing the violin as a soloist at NISM. She really likes singing in the chorus and learning new songs and loves orchestra and meeting new people. Congratulations, Olivia.
Any other pride by anyone? Okay. Moving on to seven point one, our superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I will keep it brief today because we have a number of presentations. Um, first, uh, wanna just share with the board, uh, that the cell phone policy, we are, um, gonna be moving, uh, forward to meeting that, that deadline of August thirty first of having a new policy. We are gonna be engaging our students. We've already started engaging our students from the Student Advisory Council. Um, but we're also gonna be engaging the, the community, uh, through town halls, uh, to be able to, um, kind of share some, some of the, um, work that's already been done in the district. We have a number of schools that are doing book studies around, uh, screen time. We also are working with our elementary schools, um, to bring screenagers, um, to our community so that we, we can have a panel discussion afterwards and talk about, um, some of the things that we're thinking. We're also gonna elicit some feedback from the community through, um, surveys. And then elicit questions, uh, and come up with frequently asked questions, um, documents so that we're able to, um, put that out and, and ensure that everyone is, is a part of this, this, um, process. Now, you know, whenever we, we build new policies, i- it doesn't suit everyone. Uh, so everyone may not be happy, but what we're gonna try to do is make sure that we're listening, we're hearing and incorporating as many voices as possible. Um, and then, uh, the last thing, uh, is, uh, the Bella Fields Scholarship. We've had a, a number of students and family members reach out to us, uh, regarding the Bella Field Scholarship. And just wanna reiterate, um, statement that we had shared, uh, maybe one or two meetings ago about the scholarship commences once the certificate of occupancy is issued for one of the, um, residential units in, uh, phase two of the project. On phase two, um, that is where there's about three hundred and forty-four uh, units that are being constructed. So, um, that is the way the agreement, uh, was written. Um, once that CO is issued, then the scholarship, uh, commences. That concludes my items.
And to put that in perspective, the they haven't started phase two, so the pilot has not started yet. So that we don't start collecting pilot money until they start the work, um, in there. So that's totally beholden up to when they start phase two and get us their first CO.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, moving on to seven point two. Our Special Education Update with Ms. Murphy. Should we grab the?
Yes. Very much, yes, sir.
Um, thank you. Uh, I'm Joanna Murphy. I'm the Director of Special Education. And I have my team with me, Andrew Dees, who is our coordinator for the preschool and elementary programs. Jennifer Melizia is our coordinator for the secondary grades. Um, and we just wanna start by thanking the board for giving us this opportunity uh, to present our work to you tonight, and we wanna thank the cabinet. Uh, and a special thanks to Melissa Lawson, who is our Assistant Superintendent for People's Services, um, and for her support and guidance always. And we wanna thank our entire special education team and department for their work with children every day and our special ed office team who we would be nothing without. So, um, we just wanted to start with those thanks. Um, and then this is our mission, um, we empower all learners to be successful members of our dynamic society. And we love the term all, um, because students with disabilities are included. So we wanted to start out with some numbers for you. At a glance here, um, we serve six hundred thirty-five students in grades K through twelve, two hundred sixty-three at the elementary level. two hundred sixty-three at the elementary level, one hundred forty-two middle school. These are in district numbers as well as a hundred sixty-eight students at the high school level. We do have sixty-two students that we serve in specialized schools outside of the district, including B O Cs and private schools. So our classification rate is a bit higher than, uh, the national classification rate um, is about fifteen percent while New York State is at seventeen point eight currently and we are around nineteen point two in terms of the percentage of students classified, uh, with disabilities in our district. Um, we are proud that we serve the majority of students in our own district programs. So we have ninety, over ninety percent of students with disabilities are served in our special education programs in district. We do refer, uh, just under ten percent of students at to outside placements. We wanted to give you some information about, um, transfer students into the district who transfer to us and they already have I E Ps at the time of their transfer. So we did give you some historical data here, but just this year we started tracking this information. And at the time we took this data, um, in February, we had, um, had twenty-eight transfers into the district at that point. Six of them were in need of special class programs. One was in need of an out-of-district program. I can tell you that since that time we created this slide, we have, um, two, uh, we have more students, including two who, um, are we inherited their out-of-district placements that they transferred in with. So while we have that breakdown for this year, we, um, were able to pull data from the last, um, few years and, you know, it's growing. Uh, we hover around fifty-five, sixty students a year, it's looking like, um, that are transferring in with disabilities that we need to serve, um, as soon as they transfer in. Uh, this does not include incoming kindergartners, just so you know, it's just transfers. Um, we wanted to give you a look at classifications of disability and who, you know, what types of disabilities we serve mostly here in the district. So New York State has, um, thirteen classifications of disability. Um, tho- those that are represented here, um, you'll see that the majority of our students are classified with a speech or language impairment, an other health impairment, autism, or a learning disability. Um, you know, I think that what's important to note here is that, um, some students, that the number of um, intellectually disabled students looks really, really small. There are some students that are also intellectually disabled, but their primary classification of disability is autism. So there are students that have multiple, um, perhaps diagnoses or mo- or could qualify for more than one disabling condition. But the state of New York, as I said, has thirteen classifications of disability and there's, um, criteria for each one. So it's up to the Committee on Special Education to determine the primary, um, area that best describes what the student is struggling with. Um, so I just wanted to give you that information about who we mostly serve.
Okay, that's good. So what does the multiple disability stand for?
Sure, that's a good question. So, um, that's actually a really good question because, um, if you would think that if a student has more than one, so say they have autism as well as an intellectual disability or they also have a speech and language impairment, why wouldn't they all be multiply disabled? So the criteria for multiple disabilities is that one of those disabilities is also an intellectual disability. So they would have to have an intellectual disability as well as some of these other conditions. And an intellectual disability, the criteria for that is a student has severe, um, cognitive impairment and and adaptive skills impairment.
Okay, thanks.
I could share a little bit about the next piece. Um, you know, these are specific numbers to illustrate where our staff are um, distributed, right, throughout the four elementary programs that we have. Um, you know, year to year, this can change slightly based on the students that we're serving, right? We get our projections. Um, and then each year we use those numbers to inform any, you know, changes that may be required. Um, and just some highlights here, you know, looking through as an example, if we look at Netherwood, that houses one of our very specialized programs, um, part of the continuum that we have. And you'll note that some of the latest service providers for like the size of that school has increased, right? There might be, it says two point five speech, right? And, you know, the nature of the program that's there requires, um, higher levels of support. So that's, uh, an example as to some of the decisions that are used to make these determinations for for staffing across, um, our programs.
Yeah, I don't know if you're gonna talk about it, but mapping to this, do you have the number of students that map to each one of these?
To the specific programs themselves.
Well, like in, in, you know, Netherwood, we have this number of teachers and T A's, et cetera. How many kids are in?
Kids with disabilities.
Yeah, that that are in each of the schools. I I don't know if I, you know, if you're gonna get to that, but.
We, we don't have that, but we can give you that.
Easily, we can.
Yeah, that's interesting to see.
So similar to the elementary level, secondary staffing is based on, you know, student needs, so it it could change, but has been pretty consistent. I think something like to that you might notice, like thinking about middle school versus the high school, like high school, there's a lot more students, so it might seem like we might need a lot more people, but and I'll talk more kind of about the progression and things like that, but you know, typically students are getting a lot of services in the beginning and throughout middle school. And because of their progress and getting those services typically as they get older towards graduation, you know, those services can be reduced because of that. So, um, you know, looking at the numbers, they seem very similar, but I think that's because we have that focus of, you know, pulling back and that progress we see leads to you know, less support needed at the secondary level or the high school level.
Okay, uh, so talk a little bit about the specific program, I know even not the specific numbers of students in, but kind of what's supported throughout the elementary programs here. Um, you know, just to kind of highlight what's in our photo here, talking about elementary programs. Uh, we hosted just last week, a really nice presentation for families. Uh, we, you know, formally called blooming into kindergarten. It's an information sharing session where we get to highlight all the program and, um, supports we provide, you know, special education wise and just through our general practices here in the district for kiddos that are coming into kindergarten. Now, um, I might have used the term C P S E, that's the Committee on Preschool Special Education, right? So those are the kiddos that are in our district that are being served through that committee. And as they transition to kindergarten, there's different criteria and the anxiety right outside of just classification, that big change, right, going to kindergarten and everything there. So it was a nice opportunity to highlight the the program. We had some wonderful staff, uh, volunteer their time to participate as part of a panel. Um, so we wanted to give them a shout out as well. Uh, but generally speaking, when we're looking at, um, the continuum of services, right, that's a terminology that we'll use. And what that describes is the programmatic support from least restrictive to most restrictive um, as to what is available to students. So each building uh, across the four different elementary programs have different supports, which we'll highlight in just a moment. But all together, we offer a really full and robust continuum throughout those four buildings for all of our students at the elementary level. Um, so in the least restrictive to more restrictive conversation, right, you'll see some of the offerings where we have resource room, right? That's a programmatic piece where you might be pulled out for part of the day to work on whatever given needs you have, right? Um, and as we kind of go up and through that continuum, there's an integrated co-taught model where it is at the grade level standard as it, you know, is for any other classroom. However, as the name indicates, the special education teacher support is integrated into that environment. And then we'll continue through, uh, into the special class domain. So you'll see different ratios attached to those programs. Um, really, a special class is a non-integrated program, meaning that the students within it are only those with disabilities. So there's no general education students within those programs. Um, and then different numbers you'll see are the ratio as to the specific, um, mandates to that room, right? So in this case here with Netherwood, again, this is the current, um, you know, resources at these schools. So at Netherwood, we have the eight-one-two, uh, meaning eight special education students, one special education teacher and the two assistants assigned to that room to deliver the instruction. Um, this program specifically, right, outside from the number, you wanna look at kind of the profile of student who's within it, right? And the profile, uh, for this classroom is some of the students that have some more of our significant needs, right? That really small ratio would dictate that. Um, and, you know, the students within there are those maybe on the autism spectrum, um, or those with communication disorders. We also have a special class reading, which is, uh, kind of uh, more, less restrictive in that sense. It is a special class, so it is non-integrated. Uh, but it is for, you know, thirty minutes, really work on some of those foundational pieces. Um, circling to North Park, we don't have a special class program there, but as you can see, we have a nice offering of different supports, uh, throughout the continuum, um, that offer, you know, just a little bit of pullout um, or that whole program. One thing to note as well, some students don't need a program, right? They might just need related services. That is offered at all four of our buildings as well. That's our lovely team from Violet Avenue on the screen there. So shout out to all of them for offering themselves up for, uh, for this. Uh, Ralph R. Smith, again, has a nice, robust, uh, continuum there. They do have a special class program. Their ratio there is a twelve-one-one. Um, that is again for students that require that level of support. Um, and then at Violet Avenue School, again, they have, um, a variety of different offerings and their special class program is another eight-one-two, serving a different population of student, right? Really focusing on social, emotional learning needs.
Ask the question, sure.
Yeah.
Before we get too far ahead of us. Sure. So, um, I was looking at, just comparing the elementary schools and I understand that continuum of services.
Yeah.
Um, what stood out to me was that all three of the elementary schools have I C T or Integrated Co-teaching K five. And then it kind of stood out, the Violet Avenue has it only in kindergarten, but then they have D C T or Direct Consultant Teaching for one, three, four, and five. So there's, that's a real difference for that building, but there you know, when you look at the whole picture, I just was curious if you could speak to why that one building doesn't have the I C T.
Yeah.
Um, like the rest of the buildings. I I saw later that there's, there's.
Hard cable.
Yep. But I just, I just, I'm curious what the.
How that got to here, right?
Yeah. So, so I can answer that. Um, I think that's a really great question. Um, D- D C T or Direct Consultant Teaching is another integrated model. So it's another way, you may have heard the term inclusion, it's another way of serving students with disabilities, having the special ed teacher support but within the general education setting. So Direct Consultant Teaching and Integrated Co-teaching are similar in that way. But with Direct Consultant Teaching, there's not a specific, um, number of students that can be served in a classroom or designed to be served in a classroom, if you will. So you could have one student in grade two classroom, you could have maybe three students over here. And the Direct Consultant Teacher, the Special Ed Teacher would come into that room, push into that room and support those students in the classroom. Where we design Integrated Co-teaching is when we're structuring it so that there could be up to twelve students. Not that we always go there, but there could be up to twelve students in that classroom with special needs. And in that case, we wanna go a step further than consultant teaching where you're coming in and supporting these kids where you're really, you're planning with the general education teacher. You're delivering the instruction to all of the kids, you're grading. So it, it's I C T is, um, it just implies more, um, more planning and and that the teachers are both collaboratively teaching the whole group because there's a, a pretty significant number of students in that class that have disabilities. So at Violet Avenue, this year, the numbers of students are smaller and they're sort of scattered. Like I said, so you might have one kid over here, two kids over here. So we wouldn't design an entire, we didn't anyway for this year, but we are gonna get to that. Um, we, we didn't design, uh, a program where we would have a full-time co-teacher in the room at all times because nearly half the class has needs. Does that make sense? Yeah. Thank you.
I had a question before you go off to the next question. So I, in another anomaly that I see is that at North Park, we don't have any of those special classrooms like an eight-twelve, eight-one-two or whatever. What, like, why? Like, is there any data to say why that happens like that?
Yeah, so I think, um, what's happened is that we have determined, you know, every year, uh, we, we look at what are the projections from the staff? What are they, what are they thinking students are gonna need the next year? So we take all of that data and kind of figure out where we might have, where we have groups of students who need certain services and what buildings do we have space to develop those programs? So we, we, as much, you know, we can't really have um, a full continuum in every building from Resource Room all the way to Special Class Eight-One-Two. But we really believe that our building should have integrated programs and Resource Room options. And then we've chosen buildings that have space in them to design our specially, our more highly specialized programs where we would have the, all of the students who need an eight-one-two in one building and the students. We're gonna talk more about the program design, but yeah.
So somebody could be in that, in that area to go to North Park, but there's not enough kids, so they might have to go to.
Exactly. So students at North Park, it doesn't, that's a good question. I mean, it doesn't mean that a student at North Park who needs that program, they would, they would, if they needed that program, they would, we would serve them in a building that has that program.
Yeah, the needs of the students are paramount, right? And then that's just up to us to kind of find out where the recommended school would be to, to meet that.
I got it. Thanks.
Yep.
Yeah. And, um, so, so that gets us into the, what you were leading into is our design, um, decisions for next year. Um, so as I mentioned, uh, each year we look at the projections, we review data to see if we should make any adjustments to our program design. Um, some of the things that we considered, uh, while making those decisions were the number of stu- numbers of students that we had projected for our special classes. Andrew mentioned, we have a special class eight-one-two program for social emotional learning at Violet Avenue. We have very few students in it and no new students projected for it. So we took that into consideration. We have, um, the need mostly based on incoming kindergartners with significant needs coming from the preschool section, um, preschool programs. We need an additional class for twelve students and additional special class. Uh, we have space restrictions at Ralph R. Smith. As we mentioned, Ralph R. Smith currently has five twelve-one-one classes. Um, adding a six would be really taxing on Ralph R. Smith and we really don't have the space for it. But we do have space at Violet Avenue School. Um, and we also thought about behavioral support for incoming K because sometimes the kids come into kindergarten and they just, they haven't been in school yet. They don't know how to follow routines yet or directions or even, um, they might just be, their needs might be unpredictable. So we thought maybe there's a way we could provide a little bit more support to our incoming K kids. And then we also wanted to have mainstreaming opportunities in all of our buildings, including those that have these highly specialized programs. So we wanted to make sure that if we're gonna have a special class in a building, we also have an I C T program so that as the students make progress and they no longer need that highly specialized special class, they can transition into an integrated setting. So we wanted to make sure that, that all of that. So those are the things we were considering when we, um, planned our design for next year. Yeah. So this is what it's looking like for next year. We're going to be discontinuing the Special Class Eight-One-Two for the Social Emotional Learning at Violet Avenue School. Currently, there's two classes in that building, so that creates some space for us. We're gonna add that other Special Class Twelve-One-One that we need. And this is the redesign. So what we'll end up having at both buildings is Resource Room. We'll have integrated co-teaching now in both buildings, including Violet Avenue in all grades. We will have, instead of six twelve set class sizes in one building, we will have three in each building. So we will have a K one, a two, three, and a four, five in each building, um, as well as our Special Class Reading Program. Um, we we've wanted, as I mentioned, those kindergarten students, they're sometimes unpredictable and they sometimes have some needs. Um, this doesn't mean that they, that we're creating a behavioral support program for kindergarten. But we wanted to add an additional T A. So we designed the K one in both buildings as a twelve-one-two instead of a twelve-one-one to offer that additional adult support for kids that are still learning how to be in school and are learning routines and how to socialize and play and, you know, follow directions, things that little kindergartners sometimes don't know how to do. So we wanted to. So we wanted to give some more support there. So that's what we've redesigned for next year. Any questions about that before we move on?
So then for the really highly special needs who are kids who are in the traditional, you know, one eight one class, they'd be in the, the new class?
Eight one two class, you mean?
Eight one two.
At Violet that we're, that we're discontinuing. Yeah, that's a good question. We, as we mentioned, we, we really didn't have any new students projected for that class. We believe it's because of the robust social emotional support we have district wide in all buildings. So we now have a school counselor in every building, every building has had, but continues to have a school psychologist, a social worker. We have a bright program in every building. So now there's more social emotional support. You know, with the SEL curriculum too, we have such social emotional supports for all students that we're seeing less referrals to this highly specialized eight one two program. So if we do have students that are not able, you know, that are currently needing that level of support, we would need to consider how to serve them. And if we don't have the program, we would refer them to a different placement.
Yeah. All you really need is in the middle of the year, a family to move in from somewhere else with a couple of those special needs children. Alright, so. Alright, thank you.
And are you discontinuing both of the eight one two classes at Violet or just one?
Both of them.
And then staff is just getting reshuffled, so nobody's losing jobs.
Yeah. No, no, we are not anticipating staff changes, just, just.
At the secondary level, a lot of our focus, like when we're making recommendations and, you know, looking forward, it's on post-secondary goals. So starting at sixth grade level, we typically include students in our meetings and we ask them what they want to do when they grow up or when they graduate. And our programs really want to support that and get them there. So within the middle school, you know, we, we have again a full continuum. Our resource rooms, we have a couple of different types. So we have like a traditional academic resource room as well as a social emotional supported resource room, which is, you know, students who might need a little more help in terms of coping skills. And it gives them that place to kind of regroup if they need to. Integrated Co Teaching for all core subjects and all grades. Our special classes are a little bit, you know, of a larger ratio as we move up to middle school with fifteen one for the core subjects. Students who are eligible for the New York State Alternative Assessment are in an eight one two program. So those are students with, you know, higher needs, typically working towards the skills and achievement credential rather than a regular diploma. And then we have the five to one reading classes at the middle school. And then at the high school, so again, a couple of different types of resource rooms, an academic resource room to support students, you know, with that reteaching, things like that. And then we also have what's called Resource Room T, which is for like communication support. So students who might have a classification of autism or just need more support in terms of socializing with their peers. It's a resource room that works on both academics and has push-in counseling into it as a group. And they do field trip, field trips and things like that, and really building that community. You know, Integrated Co Teaching really focused on the Regents courses to get them where they need for graduation. Similar with special classes. So again, that fifteen one setting. And moving towards integration as they graduate, because again, we're trying to prepare them for what their goals might be, whether it's, you know, going to work, going to trade school, going to college. And then again, a program for students who are participating in alternative assessment. And we also have the Practical Assessment Exploration System Lab, PACE Lab. And that's Ms. Hastings within that. We had that start last year. And it's students really being able to do like vocational skills within the classroom. And there's things that are as simple as, you know, turning a bolt on a screw up until using, you know, tools, power tools. So it's a, it's a pretty full program that we have there for, you know, students working on those life skills.
Okay. So we established some goals for this year. And, you know, code, Integrated Co Teaching, as you can see in our, in our programs, it, we, we have it in every building and we, we want it in every building. And, you know, we believe that the majority of students with disabilities can be served with special ed teacher support in an inclusive or integrated setting. So we had to have a goal around improving or enhancing co teaching. So we, we want to increase the use of some teaching models that are co teaching models that are really the models that show the best results. So parallel teaching and station teaching are the two that we'd like to see in more of our classes. And so parallel teaching is really where the two teachers split the class in two and create a smaller ratio basically within and in, in our larger classrooms. So that it's, they're able to provide more individualized attention that way. And station teaching is what it sounds like. It's, you know, rotating through stations in smaller groups and having each teacher teach a station. We want, we'd like to see more use of those models. And so we set that as a goal for ourselves and we are partnering with G and R Inclusive Group for coaching. And we have forty-five teachers participating in coaching this year. And the emphasis, we've been communicating with our staff, the emphasis on these two models. We're giving feedback through the evaluation process. And we hope to review our next steps or to review those evaluation reports at the end of the year and see if we are seeing. Then you said we're having, we, we are, as we observe teachers, we are noting the use of these models in our reports. And we've also communicated with principals and other evaluators that we'd like them to, to emphasize it as well. And another goal has to do with reducing the time out of class for students who receive multiple related services. So some of our students, especially those in our more specialized programs, like our eight one two or twelve one ones, some of them are pulled out of class for speech, OT, PT, counseling. And we really are concerned that, you know, the last thing we, we want to do is widen the gap for students by pulling them out of core instruction for more special ed service. So we really focused on looking at the data of how much missed class time is happening due to related service pullouts. We set goals with our related service providers. We've explored, we're exploring right now some other options like push-in services where speech therapists can push into classrooms and work on speech goals. As well as co-treating options where, say, for example, a speech therapist and an OT maybe work together at the same time. And a speech therapist is working on those goals while the OT is working on handwriting at the same time that the speech therapist is working on language, things like that. So that it's less pulled time out of the classroom. So we're looking at some options like that to decrease this. And we're hoping that we move into the next school year with less pullouts of class. And this goal is around least restrictive environment. With Andrew's going to talk more about what least restrictive environment is in, in a few moments. So this goal focuses on Ralph R. Smith. But we're really looking at least restrictive environment district wide. We noted that, you know, some of this is because of our twelve one one program being at Ralph R. Smith. But we're looking at a situation where fifty-nine percent of our students at Ralph R. Smith are being educated in special class instead of being integrated. So we really would like to reduce that and have students be able to receive their special education support without being removed from their typical, typically developing peers. We are engaged in a CEQA review. CEQA review is Special Ed Quality Assurance. It's where the State Education Department helps support us with our goal of least restrictive environment. We, we requested their support with this, this year. Our steps are to continue to strengthen the Integrated Co Teaching Program through the coaching so that students can be better served in Integrated Co Teaching, even students with more significant needs. Encourage mainstreaming and data-based decision-making at CSE meetings and the program design changes that we just went through. And so we did partner with not only the State Education Department, the CEQA, but also the Regional Partnership Center for Ralph R. Smith to work on strengthening the specialized instruction delivered for students with disabilities there. And also developing and implementing some social emotional interventions also. So one of the things that we worked on this year with Ralph R. Smith, for example, was their PBIS, but also their Meaningful Work Program, which allows, it's, it's a fancy word phrase for like really meaningful school-based jobs for students. And I, I mentioned before, we requested this support from the Special Ed Quality Assurance Team to look at least restrictive environment. And our regional associate for state ed has been observing us in CSE meetings and seeing how we are considering the least restrictive environment and giving us feedback and recommendations.
So yeah, to talk about that term. So least restrictive environment is one of, if not the, you know, key factors in special education. Really what it sums down to is serving a student in the right way, right? Meeting their needs and having them included as much as possible with their peers, right? What really drives a least restrictive environment is the individual, specifically the nature and severity of their disability. So that we can really drive home that what we recommend on the IEP is just to that, right? I often like to use analogies. So in meetings with families, when we talk about this, I'll often reference like the Goldilocks story, right? Where least restrictive environment is serving the student right where they are, right? You don't want to over serve, you don't want to go too much because that has a lot of detrimental effects to students. And obviously you don't want to underserve because then you're not meeting where those gaps are. You want to hit it just right, right? You want to make sure that whatever those needs are, based on all the data, right? That we collect and review at the meetings, our decisions are really found in that, right? So, you know, there's a lot of good to it, but it helps us keep students with their peers and connected to their community as much as possible as they get what they want, right? Because we offer this robust continuum. Because what is least restrictive is different for every kid. So that's why we need to have all these supports in district to have available to our kids because least restrictive is individualized and it's different for everyone.
Okay. So we wanted to talk about outcomes because we, students with disabilities, you know, they have until they're twenty-one to meet graduation requirements. And many of our students do need additional time to do that. Some students stay all the way till they're twenty-one, others need another year to, to meet their credit and exam requirements. Yet we're, the state only acknowledges a four-year graduation rate. So one of the things we did last year was we engaged in some graduation pathways work with the Regional Partnership Center where we learned more about the CEDAS. And the CEDAS stands for the Career Development in Occupational Studies Commencement Credential. And what that is, is a credential that is designed not to be a standalone credential. So the goal for students is that they are earning a Regents or regular high school diploma. But they may also engage in career development, vocational training. Think, you know, Jen shared information about the PACE Lab. And we also have a school to work program, but also BOSI's Tech Center where students are studying anything from culinary arts to construction trades. If they get that CEDAS certificate because they've earned those hours, then that CEDAS certificate can also support the student to, to graduate from high school with a diploma. So there's a safety net for students with disabilities. And the CEDAS is important as a, as a, as a way that students, if, if any of the Regents exams are a barrier for the student in earning that diploma, the CEDAS credential can really help replace one or more Regents exams to get that student to the diploma. So we, we learned more about that and we worked with BOSI's CTI. I just want to thank Melissa. Melissa worked really hard with the BOSI CTI folks to help that, have them track student hours much better than they had been so that we had that communication and we could intervene and help students earn those hours. And I want to say that our focus really in special education is on high expectations. And for students and, and their transition plans. So like Jen mentioned, at the, at the high school level and even at the middle school level, we're always having they, their post-secondary goals, what they want to do. Or even if they can't articulate it yet, what they can do after high school, that, that is what we use to guide our recommendations. We emphasize connection to school through extracurricular activities. We encourage every single special ed case manager to work with students to identify if they don't have a connection to school, if they don't play a sport or an instrument or anything like that. We, every case manager is expected to try to find some sort of after-school activity or some way for that student to connect. And we really believe in declassification. So when students are ready and they no longer require special education services, we, we propose declassification. One of the things I want to note is that declassified students who do graduate in four years don't count for us as a student with a disability who graduated. So just to reiterate, if a student doesn't currently have an IEP, when they walk across that stage, they're not counted for us as a graduate with a disability. And we do declassify, we believe that we have many, many students who have benefited from special education services for many years over the years. But maybe by ninth or tenth grade, eleventh grade, they no longer need. And they're declassified, but we believe that that's a success for us. So we wanted to end with those success stories and Jen's going to share just some examples of that.
So I, one of the things I love about the secondary level is, you know, Andrew gets to see a lot of times like how this journey starts and I get to see how it ends. And like, there's meetings where it's like emotional because the psychologist is going over the report and they're saying, okay, they started services in preschool. And these are, you know, and then we're getting to this point. So these are just some examples like, you know, student getting support in preschool, special class twelve one one in elementary school. Then a combination of special classes and ICT. ICT in high school, declassified in eleventh grade. Another student who was again classified in preschool in the SEL program at Violet Avenue. They were actually sent out of district during their middle school years, came back in ninth grade. You know, had a very good transition and declassified then. And right now they're on track for graduation. And then just, you know, a few more. And some students, you know, less restrictive, classified in preschool, consultant teaching, ICT. Again, ICT throughout, declassified in eleventh grade. And these are students who have already graduated, who graduated on time with a Regents diploma. Another student, just for a short term, you know, was with us, five oh four, classified in sixth grade, just had a little bit of support, you know, through resource room, ICT for a couple of classes. Declassified in tenth grade, Regents diploma with CTE. And then, you know, the fifth student I looked at, classified in second grade, again, in a special class twelve one one, moved to a combination of ICT and fifteen one at sixth grade, then progressed to ICT and only ICT for math. Started working towards, you know, attending BOSI's and doing a program there and declassified in eleventh grade and graduated the Regents diploma and the CEDAS. So, you know, this is like really what it's about. It's, and, you know, like, we want to give students the support so that way they don't need us anymore, you know? And it's just, you know, it is amazing to see.
And I just want to reiterate this slide, like all of these students graduated on time within four years. So, but, you know, we don't get any credit for that, like credit from the state as a graduate with an IEP. But we, we think we deserve credit. And our programs and our staff deserve credit because they did this, you know? So we just wanted to end on that note, just so you kind of understand our, you know, we are, we have high expectations for our students. Any, any questions?
So thank you for the presentation. I think it was very comprehensive. It's very edifying and so forth. So when you declassify a student, you know, it's done and with the CSC, the parent basically has to agree to that. You have to come together as a CSC, you have to have a consensus on that, correct?
We have to make that recommendation and, and we have to attempt to achieve consensus. We don't always achieve consensus at every CSC meeting, although that is the goal.
Sure. I think we all agree that the goal is to try to declassify students and lead to that as an end goal of special education in general. I don't think anybody would argue that. It's just that I've heard a couple of concerns from some, some 12th grade parents saying that suddenly in 12th grade, you know, they've been, you know, told that they should be declassified and they don't agree with that. And the concern is that if they're declassified in 12th grade, then they're not going to get the services when the students go to college. So I know we want to try to improve our numbers. I know we want to look towards our end goal, but I've heard some concerns about that on the alternate of the students when they go to college, maybe much bigger college, that they would then not have those services.
So we, we can address that. First of all, an IEP is a K to 12 document. So it expires at the end of 12th grade anyway, regardless of whether or not the student is classified all the way through graduation day. So there is no IEP in college. What parents can do, any, any college that accepts public funding needs to have some sort of office of, of supports. So for example, Duchess Community College, their office is called the Office of Accommodative Services. And so what they do is they take any evidence that the parent provides. So they can provide their last IEP, they can provide their declassified document. But mostly what those colleges want to see is the actual data. They don't necessarily care about IEPs because they're not a K to 12 system. They can't implement those services anyway. But what they do look at is the last psychological report, for example, the last educational. Like they want to see those reports and then they have a completely different criteria than K to 12. So they would look at those reports. One of the things we always coach kids when they're in high school, getting ready to transition, whether they still are classified or whether they're being declassified. We always coach kids, if you're going to apply for services in college, you need to be able to talk with the person at that office about what accommodations help you, like what you rely on, because they won't talk to parents usually. They'll only talk to the students and we try to say, you know, you have to be able to say, you know, I really need extra time on my, on my assignments. Or if I have a big test, it really helps me if I have a little bit of extra time. And when they can articulate that, and as long as there's evidence that the student has had some needs and there's reports, then the colleges most of the time will implement things. They don't implement special ed services, but they implement accommodations, like I mentioned. Or they'll give them access to the writing center or things like that, which, you know, every, every student has access to, but they will deliver accommodations and they don't really need IEPs or, or D-class documents really to do that. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention is that, because we didn't really talk about declassified support services. So the state is really nice, actually. We are allowed to, at those meetings where we recommend declassification, we are allowed if needed to, to recommend declassified support services for up to a full year as a transition away from special education services. So say a student was getting full-time ICT in every core subject area in 10th grade and the decision is made to declassify, but math is, there's a couple of math, you know, concerns. We may, we may use integrated co-teaching for math as a declassified support service. And we can do anything. We can do counseling. We can do, you know, any type of service as a transition away so that the student, it's not like cut off all of a sudden. There's like a little bit of a fade out and it gives the, the, the student a chance to have some support still as they move away from special ed. And they get their testing accommodations through graduation, even if they're declassified as early as second grade. Those declassified testing accommodations remain all the way through graduation from high school. And really the idea there is that, you know, the disability may have not gone away. So they may still have an underlying ADHD. They just no longer need a special ed teacher. So, but they might need testing accommodations. They might need extra time. They might need to sit in a location where they're not distracted. So those types of things can, can stay for students all the way through.
Right. Well, there's the IEP and then there's the 504 accommodations. And so, you know, I'm telling you, I lived the life of a special ed parent for 25 years. Colleges say if those things are removed, when you leave high school, and most colleges we've gone to and parents I've talked to, it can cause a problem in college. All I'm saying is, as we keep the goal of declassifying, we have to be very, very careful because parents are living that experience, what the colleges are telling them. I know what I'm talking about here. So we just have to be very careful.
Any other questions?
Well, that's. No, no question.
I have public. We have public comment and you can ask questions.
This was really helpful because I haven't seen such a comprehensive breakdown of everything so that we can get to the full picture, which is really appreciated. And I guess I just want to say that I know a lot of people get stuck on that percentage. You know, like test scores, we got to get those up, classification rates, we got to get them down. But we have to remember we're a public school system and we take whoever comes to us and our job is to give them what they need. So when you get 30 or 40 students coming in, that's our job. That's what we need to do. So I guess I'm saying that seven, that 19% or whatever it was is not really the concern and that we want to make sure that we're never, we're never saying, and this is me speaking, we're never saying our classification rate is too high, so we cannot give a child these services. And I'm not saying that you're doing that, right? I just, I just feel that putting that out there that so, you know, when you say we've already got two new students who are coming in who need services, well, they need services and that's what they should get. So, and I should say, I got to read to the 18, the 812 today at Netherwood. It was the joy of my.
It's wonderful.
The cutest class ever. I am, I am not kidding you. If you want a little perk, go read to the 812. They, they were just lovely and what a great program. It was.
Thank you. That's incredible.
Really, really.
Proud of it. Thank you.
Yeah.
It was good.
I actually have one little comment. She mentioned the 812 at Netherwood, but your projection is to make it a 1212, correct?
There's two, there's two 812s currently. So we have the 812 ratio, but it's a special class for social emotional learning at Violet. That's the one we're discontinuing and we're having more 12. But we have the 812 for autism and communication disorders at Netherwood. We have four classes and those are staying.
Good, because there's two also, one in the middle school, one in the high school and you can't just make them go away.
Yeah, yep, exactly.
Was there any consideration, Mr. Skarsky asked, how there's two now of the new classes? Was there consideration of maybe keeping one 81 class and one adding one 121? In other words, just again, for those children who could end maybe in the middle of the year, that's, it's bound to happen.
We did, we really just didn't have the projected students for the class to continue to offer it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just know one of our children went to Violet and they probably could have been in a 31 class, probably from, you know, God bless those teachers for what they did. So, um, but okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity.
All right, moving on. Let me just fix, let me.
Yeah, I got to click all the way back.
Moving on to 7.3, our facilities and operations update with Greg Cicero.
And company. It's all three of them.
Evening, everyone. My name's Rich Foster. And I'm here tonight, I'm joined with the facilities and operations folks. Gregory Cicero is our new director of operations and facilities. And Ron Robinson, who is our assistant director to the facilities. The reason, this is like a double feature tonight for you because we work so tightly together that it made sense for us to, to do the presentation as a group. So we drew straws before we came here. And so it's been determined that I will start first. And I'll say whether I won or lost, I'm just saying. So let's hope I get this down right. Okay. So a little background about me, I've been with the district since about 2011. I started out here as a substitute teacher, mostly primarily at the FDR High School. I transitioned at some point to facilities. I actually worked in the facilities department for a year. And then the opportunity came up to work the energy conservation program when my predecessor left the district. So I've been doing this just about coincides with the, the pandemic, actually. So, and by the way, we're celebrating five years, just a week or so ago. So it seems hard to believe that it, it's been that long, but, but it was, I'm sure traumatic for everyone. So, so I wanted to give you an idea on some of the things that go on in my department, and by saying my department, it's me. And, and obviously with the support of the two gentlemen behind me. We have several goals and I'm not going to read through each one. I'm just going to say that the overarching goal that I have is to make sure that students are comfortable, students and faculty are comfortable, safe and have a good learning environment so that they can maximize their opportunities to learn. A lot of that hinges on us keeping a pulse on what's happening in each of the buildings. And to do that, we have a way to monitor and manage through BMS, which is an acronym for Building Management System, where we actually can monitor and, and see what's going on in the building each day. And in conjunction with that, I also do work with the calendar of events, which we, gets published every week. And we go through and make adjustments according to the activities that are happening in, in each of the buildings so that we're not running the buildings 24/7. And you'll see the, the benefits of that as I move on. And I'll show you some of the graphics in, in terms of what's happening in the buildings and the opportunities where we save. When I talk about education, part of my role, my official title is Energy Program Manager and Energy Educator. It's kind of a hybrid position as recognized in Duchess County. And when I talk about education, I'm, I'm thinking right away of, of the interactions that I have with classrooms and students. But I also, when I thought about it, it really involves educating everyone, including administration and the faculty. And by that I mean giving them nudges throughout the year to make sure that they understand what their responsibilities are, what we're looking for them to do, especially prior to breaks. Those are our biggest opportunities to save money for the district. So, excuse me. So in addition to classroom interaction, I'm also communicating with them, giving them guidance on what to do in order to prepare for shutdowns on holidays and things of that nature. Because those happen to be the biggest opportunity to create savings for our district. We regularly meet also with, with our vendor, which happens to be Trane. And we address performance issues in each of the buildings. As a matter of fact, we just had one yesterday. And we'll talk about issues that are happening within the buildings and anomalies and one-offs where we can go in and tackle ongoing issues. Because our, as I said, our primary obligation is for the students and faculty to be comfortable in, in what it is that they're doing in the rooms. There is some, there are some EPC, EPA rather, factors that kind of come to mind. One of them being that when they're, when an environment is well-controlled and well-ventilated, that the outcomes for students and teachers happens to be exponentially better than it is in a room that's poorly ventilated with outside air. Typically, I think we run most classrooms at a minimum of about 10% outdoor ventilation. And it varies depending obviously on weather conditions and so forth. But it's critical to get that turnover in each of the classrooms. And, and the industry standard typically is about four turnovers of air, air within the room every hour. So what we're trying to do is promote a healthy environment because that helps also reduce the level of, or the opportunity for infection. A lot of that happened as, as a result of COVID, but there, there is guidance that says that we should continue that. And that's something that we have done. We've honed it a little bit so that we're not running 24/7 anymore because it's not necessary. But we certainly do our due diligence in terms of turning over the air, both at the end of the day and before students come into the building. Up to the next thing. I'm going to talk a little bit about, well, you're getting two flavors here. If you look at the last school year, I'm just giving you the, the facts as they exist. The, the cost delta from the previous year runs about an 18% reduction. And the energy that was used during that period of time is reduced by about 7%. The only problem with that is that it's not normalized. It doesn't take into account a lot of factors. Some of those might be weather conditions, it would have to do with schedules in the buildings, the utilities costs and things of that nature. So those all have a bearing on, on how we measure that. So in order to, to make it a fair comparison, if you look at the, the grouping below it, where it talks about the life of the program, this takes you back to the advent of the program itself, which was in August of 2013. And during that period of time, we were going through a lot of growth and, and startup costs. So you'll see that the cost overall for the program was fairly significant, $957,000, which seems like a lot. But again, the upfront costs that we were hit with in the beginning, because we were working with two companies at, at that time, constitutes a lot of that dollar amount. The savings, however, throughout that period of time, that period from August 2013 until now, is, as you can see, it's 2,000, I'm sorry, $2,698,154, which is a 21% decrease. And that's expected over the actual. So whatever would normally have happened had we not intervened and had a, a committee or a person rather to do this, if we just continued on our old ways, we would not have saved that amount of money. So it's a substantial savings in terms of what the program has offered the district. The, the, the industry term for that is BATCC. And that's the baseline adjustment for current conditions. So we establish the baseline early on and then based on any changes to the conditions, you make modifications to that and then measure against that. If we had done that in the last school year, the actual BATCC for that differential between those two years, July 2023, June 2024 was about 14.8%. There's a graphic on the right that shows what, a pie chart sort of thing that shows you what that would look like in terms of the program savings. These standards are all industry standards and the way we get those, I, the software that I'm currently using, it's called Energy Cap. And, and the measurements that I've derived from that come from some standards that are, one is ISO 55,015. And if you've been an IPM or anyone like that, you're very familiar with the ISO. And you know that those are the industry standards that are very strict and regimented and accepted across the board by industry. It also is as measured by the, in accordance with the international performance measures and verification protocols. So two different entities that are validating the information I'm giving you tonight.
Is the 2.7, is that net?
Is the two point seven, is that net savings or is that gross?
That's cumulative savings across the board and that's, that's the delta between.
No, but does it take into account the, the nine hundred fifty seven?
Yeah.
So, so the savings was actually nine hundred fifty seven thousand dollars more?
Um, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question where you're going. No, the, the, I take out the nine hundred fifty seven thousand.
So it's, it's about a one point seven?
Yeah, they don't compute that. In this software, that would be something that would be manually put in. Um, moving on, I'm going to show you, this is, no, we have a number of, of, um, dashboards. I'm going to offer you an opportunity to peek under the hood to see what, what it is that we look at each day. We have several dashboards that we rely on for information. Um, one of them being Train Connect and that's, that provides us real time data. Again, gives us a pulse on what's happening in the buildings and it's this sort of images, the images that you see here. You can slice and dice and, and dissect information for each of the buildings throughout the day and see what's happening in real time. Um, there's also another system connected with Train. In this case, it's called Tracer and that's the system I use. On a, on a daily basis to adjust the schedules throughout the day in accordance with whatever activities are happening in the school. More especially at night when the, the school buses leave and we have other activities like. Cheerleading practice, basketball practices, auditoriums are being used, those sorts of things. So rather than shut everything down at that point, we, we want to make sure that the people that are occupying those spaces during those periods of time. Are in a good environment. So make those adjustments and then I tailor it at the end of the night to shut everything down again until the next day. And that happens as well on weekends because as you know, we have a lot of activities that happen on the weekends. Um, Energy Cap is what you're looking at here. This is. One of the dashboards that's offered to us. This was kind of a sandbox exercise I was working on with them recently, just to kind of. Show different parameters and to get an idea on how we can look at things differently. Some of them factor in the weather conditions. So you can actually see how it parallels. And, and coordination with whatever is happening in terms of temperature and those sorts of things. It helps us normalize the data so that we can compare apples to apples. Um, it also looks like any anomalies and, and wave a red flag and say something's not right here. It does that automatically. It's almost like A I. And if, if I wasn't, if I didn't have my eyes on it myself, it'll make sure to let me know that there's something. That's amiss and to, to look into it. Um. This is to give an idea on what the, the ratios of our commodities usage is within the district. As you can see, there's, there's two charts here that you're looking at and one is. The one on your left, it's a little, it's a little deceiving because the, the, the ratios are off somewhat, but, um. You can kind of see where the commodity use is and the energy use, um, across all the buildings and that includes oil. Electric, natural gas and other would be something like propane because the cafeterias use that. Couple more slides and I won't, I won't read them for you. I, you have them in front of you, but I wanted to point out a couple of things that are interesting about this. This is something called a heat map and this essentially is what's showing, um, activity. In this case, it's Netherwood School. And again, we have them from each of the schools. And you can see where the orange areas or the reddish areas are the areas that indicate a high level of activity in the school. High level of occupancy and, and, um, things are humming in, in each of the buildings. Um, prior to that, we're pretty much at baseline. We're just running just enough to sustain the building through the day. And then it, you'll note that it starts to ramp up, um, just prior to the students arriving and the faculty arriving. Um, you'll see a couple of gaps there. You'll, and I, I had a pointer before, but I, I came in and checked it before and I realized. You can't, it doesn't show if I, so, um, bear with me on that. But if you look pretty much in the middle of that chart. You'll see a, a large green section and that's representative of one of our breaks. In this case, I believe it was the Christmas break. And then just to the left of that three bars over, you'll see another one and that happens to be the Thanksgiving break. And you'll see where there's virtually no activity happening in the schools during those periods of time. So again, I talked about it before, but these are significant opportunities to, to cut back on our energy. And it relies heavily on, um, the cooperation of the, the staff, stodial group, F and O. To help make sure that we do everything we can to set back when we have those opportunities. Any questions so far? All right. Um, another slant at this, but I just, the reason I'm showing this is because this kind of integrates the outdoor temperature in with. What the peak demand is. And again, this is an example of Netherwood School. Um, this kind of looks like my E K G, but, um, it, it, again, you see correlations with where. The temperatures are and again, you'll see those gaps. You see the, the, uh, the sections where we were on break during those periods of time. So very low level of energy usage during those periods. The, uh. The, there is a peak demand in this case. It was about seventy one kilowatts. And I'm going to talk about that in just a little bit. Is there something that I'm looking ahead to to see how we can, um. Maximize our cost savings, optimize the systems and maximize our cost savings. And it's discussions again that we've had. As recently as yesterday about how we do that. Um, couple of other outlooks. This is the monthly energy trend for what's happening. You'll notice that. Um, there are some severe peaks. Those tend to correlate the, the ones with the higher peaks tend to be the years where. Uh, we were just coming back from the pandemic and we were running, uh. Vigorously the H V A C systems to, to ensure that the, the areas were saved. So paramount to anything else, it's the safety of the students. As much as I'd like to save money. Um, our, our primary concern at that point was to ensure that, um, the buildings and the rooms were safe for students. These are all measured by the way in K B T U because, uh, you're, you're measuring both. Um, cubic feet in terms of, um, natural gas as well as, um, K W and electric and so forth. So in order to make it a, a consistent comparison across the board, they convert everything to K B T U. And we're looking at the monthly cost analysis year to year. Again, this is from E cap. If you look at the red line, um, that kind of tops out and, and is somewhat higher than the others. That correlates in a large way to the work that was being done at F D R at the time. Remember we were doing pod work and those buildings, the, the building envelopes weren't very sealed at that period of time. And there was a lot of, um, energy usage by the contractors during that period. So that is what drove. In a large percentage, most of that increase. Now these are eye charts for anybody sitting over here. So you know, so if you cover your left eye and can you turn it to us? Um, these are breakdowns. I, and I not only can look at it holistically as, as all the utilities and all the commodities. I can also break it down in terms of, uh, individual comparisons in terms of electric, fuel and so forth. So this is just to give an idea on what these would look like in terms of the last forty years and comparing year to year. The bar chart that I'm showing you right now is a product of a project that we've been working on with Train. We went about installing meters in each of the buildings throughout the district. Um, to give us more accurate overview on what's happening in each of the buildings and again, and again, give real time information back to our. Our database so we can actually see it in real time. Um. In this case, the, the bar on the left, although it's higher than the others. Did not include at the time Ralph R. Smith and Violet Avenue because those two meters had not been commissioned yet. So. Um, if you can imagine that bar would have even been higher had those been installed at that point. So we're on a good trend, um, even though twenty twenty five is low, um. We're only partway through the year, so we'll probably have a better idea on how we're doing this year as we close in on, uh, May, which is. I talked a little bit before about, um, opportunities. I'm just going to give you this example. This is, this is. What you're looking at here is the peak load analysis for F D R High School. And the way to read this actually is from right to left. So if you look at the right, that, the line across the bottom, the, the, uh, axis on the bottom. Is actually representative of the percentage of time that each of these. Uh, variances occur. So you have zero to one hundred percent. So if you look at the bar as it, it rises slightly, we are probably, um, um, in looking at the chart. We probably are at about sixty kilowatts to run that building as a baseline. And, and what I mean by that is bare bones, we don't have the gym running. We don't have a lot of activities going on in the buildings. The classrooms are shut down and this is just bare bones to keep the men, the minimums that we need to have the, the building stay afloat. As it moves further to the left, you'll see, um, a higher. Uh, demand and as you get to the very left column, you'll see an opportunity where. If we were to take that one little sliver that you see right along that vertical axis and, and deduct that. One percent of the time where we're peaking out at that peak demand. We have an ability to cut back substantially on, on each of the buildings. In this case, at Nether, or at F D R. The, uh, the load reduction, just by doing that one percent would represent ninety three kilowatts. So if we could do that across the board in all circumstances, it would be an opportunity for us to save. Both energy and, and cost. So that's one of the projects, an ongoing thing that we've been working on with Train. To develop strategies to do that. It's kind of a, it's our own internal load shedding process that we're looking at. And, um, it's something that we can control and there are methods that we can employ to do that, to monitor. And, and probably the times that this happens would be in, and, oh, as an example, it might be in June when. We're running air conditioners, all the classrooms are full and there are the act, activities in the gymnasium and those sorts of things. And what we would do is monitor and, and have a signal to tell us that we're getting to a point where we're approaching that. That high level peak load. And if, if we're aware of it and we're able to take some actions to. Cut back in areas that are non-critical areas, we would have that opportunity to, to take that one percent away. So it really isn't a very painful thing to do. It just, it, it's. It's more a, a planning and, and, uh, execution. Question for us and then in coordination with our, our vendor to, um, come up with solutions where we can do that. So. That's something that we're looking at right now. I just wanted to share that with you so we can understand that, um, we, we do have a goal. I thought one percent is fair for now, but each year if we keep attacking that and keep going after the one percent year after year after year. Before you know it, we kind of smoothed out that, that curve that you see there and, um, it becomes, um, more manageable. And less costly for the district. So I'm going to share with you one more element of what I do. This is my favorite thing that I enjoy doing and that is interacting with students. We have a lot of opportunities to do that. We've been working recently with, um, Ecology Club at Havlin Middle School. Um, Bree Penny is the, um, faculty advisor for the Ecology Club. Um, working also with, um, elementary students and some of these cases. I think the top couple of photos, you'll see a good looking gentleman in that picture in the middle. Um. We invited Ron there that day and, and that went over very well and students really enjoyed it. This was Violet Avenue. This was both fourth grade students, both fourth grades rather, um, Chris. From Cosby and Suzanne Gill. So, um, we worked with their students and they're always fascinated when they find out we're going on a field trip to the boiler room. Somebody tipped them off before I got there because when I broached the topic. Everybody already had their, their shoes on and were ready to bolt out the door because they knew where we're going. Uh, we did take the opportunity too. We, we took the students in the Ecology Club on a field trip again, short round trip within the district. To let them experience the benefits of the electric bus when it came onboard. Um, special thanks to Nicole from Transportation and, um, Tom Germano was a bus driver. He's great with the kids, um, explained a lot of things, showed them under the hood. And all, all the inner workings of what an electric bus looks like. Some of the students had never ridden on a bus at all, so they really didn't have anything to compare it to, but. In some cases, the students did notice the difference in the, in the, uh, noise that was happening and the fumes. That don't exist within an electric bus that normally they're used to. Um, so it was a good day there and then, uh, we've also got some work going on recently with the Gardening Club. And although it doesn't seem like it's connected, um, part of it is, it seems as though sustainability kind of correlates to. What it is I do in terms of. E, energy usage and, and energy conservation. So, um, I think it's important that we give them opportunities as well to learn in different ways. So. We'll share more about that with you as we go down the road, but right now we're, we're just, um. Enjoying the interactions with those students, great groups of students. I'm, I'm really blown away by the questions that they ask and, um. And I thank Ron again for his help and coming with me on, on that one particular day. Um, last thing I wanted to share with you is obviously this, there is no success in this program without the. The support of everyone that works for the district. And by that, I mean everyone from custodial teams and facilities folks to students and staff. And then administration and so forth in getting this to happen. Um, as I walk off through the buildings and off hours, that usually gives me a sense as to how committed the teachers and staff are. To energy conservation. Um, when they cooperate and they, they follow the guidelines, it really sends a good positive message to the students as well. So I depend on them to help champion the cause and to convey the message because students pick up on things like that. And if they notice the teachers are shutting off the lights as they leave the room every time, that becomes habit for them as well. So those are the type of things that I think are going to live with them, um, even beyond their school years, but. Those are the type of things we try to encourage and, and incorporate in the daily behaviors. Um, prior to every break, every, every person in the district is probably familiar with my, my. Breathing cards, I will say, just to brief everybody again on what the procedures are for. Shut down and setback before they leave for holidays again, and, and with the intent of trying to conserve energy as much as we can. Um, and finally, if you look at the right, um, just including with this, uh, slide. This is a way of recognizing people who do the right things. And as I go through and visit the classrooms and the teachers have actually followed all the guidelines. I like to acknowledge that because I think all of us, you know, students like to be recognized. I think adults are just big students. And they like to be recognized too. So, um, we usually distribute those cards out to folks that do a good job and, and meeting all the criteria. And the reason I know that works is because I get comments sometimes from people asking, what do I need to do to get one of those cards? So I know it's happening. I know it, it has some meaning for people. So I, I plan on continuing to do that. And with that, are there any questions? I'm turning over to the guys.
I was just going to say, obviously I'm a big fan of those emails.
I was just gonna say, obviously, I'm a big fan of those emails like everybody else. It's great to see, I've worked in schools for thirty years and not many districts do that, so it's really nice, it's a nice reminder. About how important it is to to save energy and so forth. Now, you mentioned about how the lights get shut off and people go home, sports is done and the building's done, but. Um, you know, I can tell you how many years I've climbed up on ladders and turned off. You know, computer things and so forth, so it's it's important. Just don't turn off those servers like Bobby can say over there and the switch is because. They, you know, after we're home and eating dinner and in bed, they, the video systems, the computer systems, they still have to keep running. You know, it's a twenty-four seven thing.
Absolutely right, and I and and those guidelines aren't done in a closet, I actually um, tie out with Rick Ward. To make sure that we're we're not doing anything that's gonna do damage or be detrimental to our our I T group. Um, because you know how difficult that can be and painful to to recover from that, so. We do work with other groups to make sure that um, there's mutual understanding. As as a matter of fact, the last example of that is in the in the gymnasium and the in the weight room. They have a few exercise bikes that notoriously have, they have the screen, it's like a treadmill type thing and the screens are always on. And for a while I kept turning it off and then I was told that um. One of the the problems, there is evidently a problem when it gets turned off. That it needs to run continuously and every time I do that, you have to call in a technician to come in and fix whatever. So um, we have to make some adjustments, but um, we just try to apply common sense where where we can.
Thank you, it could be part of this or the next part of the presentation, just the the governor's. Bill that she signed about the classroom climate for the fall. And you know, once it hits eighty-two, schools have to quote unquote, take action. And then if it's eighty-eight, evacuate, so. It could be part of the next part of the presentation, how are how are we gonna do that, where are we with that?
That's that's actually, I'll I'll let them share their thoughts too. We we are members of S F A, New York State S F A, and that's a. Governor of all the the uh, schools, all the directors of facilities and so forth. And that's the problem that's prevalent, everyone's struggling with that. And it's it's not gonna be an easy thing, I will say that a lot of the changes that have happened. I'm thinking of North Park as one example, but Violet Avenue as well. That's some of the the actions that we've taken recently with with H V A C. Is gonna make those buildings feel much more comfortable than they'd have in the past. So I'll let, I don't want to steal their thunder though, so I'll let them talk.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, I must have. So honestly.
So um, it's a pleasure to be here, it's an honor, I appreciate the opportunity to present. A portion of this presentation uh, for the, as behalf of the Facilities and Operations Department. It really is an honor and thank you for that. So just an uh, overview of our facilities are nine, we have nine buildings. There's six hundred and twenty-six thousand square feet, uh, sitting on a beautiful hundred sixty acres of Hudson Valley property. Um, staffing is uh, currently forty-five facilities and operation personnel. Uh, with six vacancies. Um, one of which is a. The groundskeeper position. Four custodial positions and one head custodian position. So looking at that bottom line, I feel if I do a really good job on this presentation, it won't read. Forty-four current facility and operation personnel and seven vacancies, so. Okay, um, this is a shot of our work order system and where we stand uh, currently. Uh, there was since July first, two thousand twenty-four, eight hundred and fifty-seven work orders. Seven hundred and sixty-seven, uh, six, seven hundred and sixty-six of them, excuse me, uh, those work orders are completed and closed. We have ninety-one uh, new requests currently open. Um, which is actually a very good number for us, so I gotta thank our staff. The custodial staff, the maintenance staff, the groundskeeping staff, because. A high percentage of those new requests are monthly generated requests. From our uh, work order system, which are preventative maintenance work orders. And there's also um, a portion of those. That we have a priority list, so we have emergency, we have safety. We have high priority, medium as well, so. What happens is we deal with the high priority um, request first. Anything that's safety related, emergency related, they come in almost daily. So anything on a low request, like maybe, I mean, all requests are important to us, but if it's hanging a picture. Or maybe painting a wall. Some of those things, you know, they have to, if we have um, balls that come in during the day. That are, oh, our exterior doors don't latch. Well, we gotta take care of that first, we have backed up plumbing, we gotta take care of that, right? We have lights out in the classroom, anything that's instructional related or infrastructure related, we'd like to take care of those first. So that's where, it's actually a really good number. This is a. Alright, a picture of an ADA lift, this is at North Park Elementary. And these are the projects I like best, these are like hard warning, because these are. Projects of pride, right? So it really encompasses the Hyde Park Central School District when it comes to. Respect, kindness, compassion and inclusion. Because we know that when we look at these. These uh, vehicles of inclusion, that when these students with disabilities. Um, go with their classmates and they're either gonna do a play, maybe play with the band. You know, any activity on the stage that they're always gonna be able to join it. So that is really, you know, a comfortable feeling. And uh, we have, we just had one install that have one over summer. Um, this coming summer, one will be going in at F D R for the stage. And we'll have two buildings, you can see in the two thousand twenty-six school year, Netherwood Elementary is gonna receive a. A lift as well. And then we'll have two left, we'll have Violet Avenue. And Hyde Park Elementary, so I think we should keep her put on the gas. And uh, keep moving forward. Because they're very important. Um, this was also nice. There's installation of the playground at Ralph R. Smith, this just took place um, this past November. Thank you, Gardner. And um, the great thing about this is, I know when I got an opportunity to meet uh, most of you guys. When we were doing the walkthrough with Dr. Roman, uh, safety walkthrough. And you notice that a lot of our playgrounds um, contain mulch. And with this playground here and the safety surface. It is so much more easier to maintain, to keep clean. For a- access with children with disabilities, they can uh, you know. I don't, I don't know how hard it is, but the the mulch is really deep sometimes and there is ADA access. But I'm sure it's pretty difficult to move around if you're in a wheelchair or or some type, you have mobility issues. It's not gonna be easy to walk on mulch or be pushed in. So this is really a nice project of inclusion as well. Um. I'd like to say that the the man hours involved in maintaining the playgrounds with the mulch. And the cost is just, it's overwhelming. So it would be uh, beneficial for us to, since we have a lot of new playgrounds already. To move forward with trying to get rid of the mulch and get these soft surface um, playgrounds. Put in so we can, you know, have, normally that are more hygienic. God knows what's in those mulch. For kids, you know, and they're going in there, run around, they'll dig around, so you got, some areas are are soft and thick, some areas are thin. I mean. They're like a Jack Russell, these kids. But uh, I think I think that, it's just something that's, you know, that I really enjoyed seeing come to completion. And the kids love it, it's a beautiful playground. And uh, I think it's just a, a great thing to keep going, moving forward with. Um, these are the um, the sun shades for the outdoor instructional space. We have two at Netherwood, one in North Park, one in Violet. And today, I met with um, Angel Rivera from American Recreation. To um, get locations, sizes and quotes for Ralph R. Smith and Havlin to have one for the sixth grade class. Um, so we'll be getting some feedback from him shortly. Um, because they're they're another wonderful project to uh, I mean, they come in so so handy, right, you can have. You can have uh, what they, what do they do, the moving updates, right, they have P T A. Um, a lot of activities that go on. And it's also a nice emergency shelter in case you're outside and next thing you know, it's downpouring, so. You know, so there's a lot of good uses for these sun shades and outdoor instructional spaces, so. Once we have those two finalized, um, the whole district will have them. This was a, an internal project, I'm proud of the staff for this because. It was used for storage. It was, you know, filled with stuff and just wasn't used for years, so. I have to credit um, the custodians for cleaning up that floor so well, this is H P E Gymnasium. And um, now it's used for healthy kids before and after school daycare. And picture on the left is when it was finished, after being painted clean. Um, the floor waxed, windows done, um, our. Our maintenance staff did the electrical for adding the uh, exit signs and putting better exit lighting. So it really came out wonderful and the space is being utilized um, every day now, it's great. Uh, now turn it over to.
Where I jump in?
Yeah.
Um, thank you for having me tonight, my name is Gardner Sistro, I'm the new director of facilities for Hyde Park. Um, and I thank you for, again for having me. I'm gonna update you on our capital projects, um, this is Phase Two A, which was primarily the Violet Avenue Elementary School. Uh, this slide depicts where we converted our steam boiler system and heating system in the building. To a hot water system which helps to uh, get more even heat throughout the building. And keep the heat consistent in the classroom, so you don't have. Where a radiator opens up and all of a sudden the room gets very hot. And then as it cuts down, it starts getting much colder, so it it helps balance the heat and the heat mode in the room. Much more efficiently um, throughout the space. And the picture on the right is depicting the circulator pumps that were installed. To circulate that water through the building, there's actually another set. Of those uh, pumps on the backside of the boiler that's pictured in the front there. Um, also part of Violet Avenue was the installation of new unit ventilators in all of the classrooms. Those unit ventilators not only heat the space, they exchange the air. Um, in the classroom as Rick was was mentioning, uh, Rich was mentioning earlier. Um, and they also have the cooling coils in them to provide air conditioning. Um, and the two pictures on the left are the variable refrigerant flow condensers. Which are uh, the most efficient type of air conditioning condensers on the market. Which allow the compressors to regulate the flow of refrigerant needed based on the demand and and. Um, as the demand comes down, it allows them to to back down. Um, without just shutting them off completely and and having them come on and off on a consistent basis. Um, that uh, piping from those units out to the classrooms was tested. That was completed last week. Um, we expect them to be starting the comfort testing of the air conditioning. Uh, within the coming days and as uh, it starts warming up outside. That process is gonna take several weeks until we were able to really get a good balance. Of the uh, air conditioning in those classrooms. Um. So we do expect that on the second shift uh, evening hours. The contractors will continue to be working in the in the spaces to wrap up all of the punch list items, which are. Things that the architects and engineers um, have pointed out that need to be addressed in those those spaces. Uh, Phase Two B was uh, the beautiful, beautiful renovation of. Havlin Middle School's auditorium, every time I walk into that building, I'm just so impressed by the work that was done in that space. Um. I I I really applaud the district for for doing this renovation project, very beautiful space. Along with Havlin Middle School was the installation of the security vestibule. Um, that work is completed and functioning. What let me in, the first couple of times I went through, my swipe card wasn't working at the time. So it was doing its job, it sensed the card, it wasn't allowing you to go into the space. Uh, Phase Two B, Ralph R. Smith received a new uh, entrance bus loop. As well as a teacher and staff parking lot. Beautiful new flagpole with a beautiful American flag there and that wonderful blue sky, that I was really impressed with that. That picture there, um, and we're working through punch list items over there as well. We're expecting most of the work to be completed last week, but there are still some some additional punch list items.
Question?
Sure.
Start, Phase Three A, I thought in Two A or Two B, there was the security vestibule at Violet Avenue, but I don't see it listed here. Is there an update on that?
Violet Avenue, that's part of the next phase, right? Violet Avenue.
I thought there was, I didn't think there was any. I'm sure part, it was more uh.
We can do as we go, we can get back to the board on that.
Sure, because I just, every school's listed it and I just know security festival, the vestibules was a really important piece of these. Of these projects, so that would be great to get an update at some point, thank you.
Absolutely. Uh, so Phase Three A, F D R High School, we had our kickoff meeting on March eleventh. Um, and although you won't see a lot of the work starting right at this moment, it's. It allows us to uh, be able to start the uh, process of contractors getting all of their submittals of. Materials and approvals from the architects and engineers. And um, our general contractor is Ferrari and Sons out of Poughkeepsie, New York. Mechanical contractor is S and O Construction Services out of Pleasant Valley, New York. Uh, electrical contractor is, I I hope I'm saying it right, South Stowe Electric?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, uh, out of Rhinebeck, New York. Um, all of these contractors, I understand from the Palumbo Group. Um, who is our management company, have done work for the district before and have done quality work. And we have no concerns with any of the the contractors um. Being able to fulfill their their part of the deal here. Um, also, um. We have some A C M abatement scheduled for spring break, that's asbestos containing materials. Um, the middle picture there is the domestic water tank that is insulated with asbestos containing materials. That is a bulk of that um, abatement project that will take place. We will begin to see postings uh, posted on the doors ten days prior to that work starting. Um, we've reached out to administration at F D R to let them know so they can. Uh, let staff know that those postings will be going up, but all of that work will take place. During spring break when the buildings are are not occupied.
Are are they gonna do the uh, the the floor that was flooded that has asbestos?
Yes, that that work is scheduled, um, where spring break is. That that work is scheduled uh, more spring break as well. Um, the way we have that structured right now is that there will be the patchwork done so we can get reoccupied in there, and then we're gonna go back into there over the summer and abate the entire floor and replace the entire floor in there because there are other concerns that it it might have some issues if we just leave patchwork, so. Yep. Uh, Phase Three B are new security vestibules at Netherwood, North Park. Um, Hyde Park Elementary and District Office. Um, we will also have a new well and water treatment facility at Netherwood Elementary School. I've I've been um, informed that we've had some well uh, issues with the well pump over there um, within the last year or so. Um, so part of this project is to to replace that well, that well pump and the uh, water treatment facility so that we're in uh, a hundred percent compliance with the Department of Health uh, for our domestic water. District Office here will be receiving a new septic system. Uh, with that, uh, that work is scheduled to start. Um, we're hoping um, during spring break as well, um, so there will be work going on here um, for that system so that um, we can get that taken care of. Prebid walkthroughs were held on March the sixth. We had uh, expedited our bid opening. Originally, it was gonna be on March twenty fifth, but we expedited that to March eighteenth because uh, um, construction management firm had gotten some information back to us that uh, lead times on some of the items that were needed to get the security vestibules done were long long showing to be longer lead items um, than we would have liked, so we were trying to buy a little bit more time uh, by oh, having our bid opening sooner. Um, we did complete contractor qualifications on the nineteenth. And we, I believe we have um, the proposals to the board tonight for um, awarding those bids at tonight's meeting. Uh, with that, I would like to thank the board for all of your work and the administration for all of your hard work as well in support of the facilities department because without your help and support, we can't do our jobs effectively and as efficiently um, as the community of Hyde Park would like. And we thank you for all of that. Any other questions? Any questions?
Just a quick one for me. So all the bid awards that we get with the new contractors. Um, I don't know if you're, you know, but we had a lot of issues at Violet Ave with a prior contractor. Is that one getting any of these bids? Okay.
No, we we are very happy to do that. Yeah. Um, I'm, yes, all all except the electrical contractor have done work for the district before and they were very comfortable with that. Um, and the electrical contractor has done work with Palumbo before, so they're familiar with their work and and abilities to do the job as well, so. Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, with that, we will get back to you on the um, Violet Avenue Security. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yep.
All right, moving on to seven dot four, the budget update with Dr. Roman and Steinberg.
Good evening, everyone. So this evening, we're gonna be presenting um, another uh, segment of the budget. But before we do that, I I'm really excited. Uh, this afternoon, both Linda and I uh, did our first recording of a three-part uh, video series that we're gonna be launching in about another week or so for the budget, so it will be sort of like a budget one oh one, and then it's gonna carry us through to where we're investing our resources to support our students. And then lastly, it will be how do we engage the community in the budgetary process? And so we're really excited about launching those. Um, again, uh, as we had alluded to in previous presentations, uh, everything is aligned to our strategic plan, which again was a community um, uh, effort. And so we're continuing to keep focused on the five different areas uh, aligned in our strategic plan uh, for excellence. Uh, at the current moment, uh, this is the budget development timeline, and so we're currently approaching the final preliminary uh, budget, uh, which will be my recommendation to the board. Uh, soon after that, we'll have the adoption of the budget, and then uh, lastly, we have the budget vote on May twentieth.
All right, thank you. So I'd just like to say about the budget video that I have a new nickname now. I am One Take Linda. Done and done. Yeah, so uh, we do have a a few things in the budget that are still outstanding. Uh, we don't have a a budget yet from the state. Um, it is due on April first, but uh, it's uh, may or may not happen by then, um, depending on how significant any changes to state aid are and where we are in the process when the budget is passed. There might be changes to our budget to accommodate that. Uh, we wouldn't uh, change the overall total budget, though. We would just change the amount that we show in state aid and offset that with uh, the amount that we have for fund downs appropriation. And we are currently still working on our uh, BOSI service request. We know all of the services that we wanna purchase next year, but we just don't have the rates for everything yet. So um, if there are changes in that, um, that would be reflected in a a future uh, budget presentation too. Thank you.
And our key drivers uh, continue to focus on preservation of programs. So we're preserving many of the programs that we have seen yield some positive results. We're also enhancing programs, so we're really excited for next year. We're gonna continue with our number of students that go to CTE uh, programs. We're continuing to support the Winter Circle Project, so when we think about our mission and vision about innovation, we're continuing to do that. We're really excited to announce that we have our first cohort of P-Tech students that will be participating in that program uh, through BOSI, so that is incoming ninth graders that will have an opportunity to earn an associate's degree in a specialized area. Um, again, in those um, job areas that are seeking uh, emp- employees, uh, and so we're really excited about that. In terms of efficiency and effectiveness, you saw it this evening from several presentations that we are working toward sustainability. We are working toward being more efficient so that we can continue to ensure that the 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 resources that we have are diverted to our students. Uh, sustainability and then uh, of course, the impact on our taxpayers. Uh, so as we're going to uh, again, highlight and reiterate, we are able to um, go up to a a tax levy increase of two point four percent. However, we are gonna be staying below that, and we feel very confident that we can achieve these four drivers uh, with with um, that two percent.
Thank you. So um, the last two meetings, we did talk about the tax cap uh, calculation. We did leave this in the presentation, so it's there for anyone to uh, look at. Um, I'll just mention that the current uh, tax year, so the budget that we're in now, our our cap was at three point six one percent, and we did go up to the limit. Our limit for next year for two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six is two point four three percent. And um, as we discussed previously, we are going to recommend a budget that's underneath the tax cap. Uh, we are looking to have a tax levy increase of two percent. So the difference between the maximum allowable tax levy and what we're proposing is three hundred seven thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars. Um, in order to uh, make up that difference, we would be appropriating that much more in fund balance to the budget next year. And we showed this slide last time, too. It's just a a a representation, a visual representation of the tax levy increases over the years. Um, the tax levy increase does change for us year to year. It's uh, based on many factors, but mostly economic, so there are years where we have the ability to raise more taxes than other years. Uh, this slide here shows our preliminary uh, revenues, uh, comparing the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six revenues to the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five adopted revenues. Um, our total budget uh, as it is right now for next year would be a hundred and uh, twenty-five point nine million. That's a four point nine million dollar increase or four point one three percent. Uh, something that we did a little differently with this slide than we had in previous years is we broke out the state aid uh, to show uh, the state aid that's attributable to building aid and transportation aid for bus purchases. The reason we thought it was important to break that out is uh, that amount along with the interfund revenue from debt service fund is what we use to fund the actual debt service payments. So I wanted to show that those are two items in our revenues that don't really go towards the operations of the school district, but to the capital portion for the debt service. And here we have the actual expenditures. Uh, you can see near the bottom of the second to last line, the debt service payments uh, increased about nine hundred forty-one thousand. I should have mentioned on the revenue slide, we were just over a million dollar increase between the two items that fund that amount. Um, also, everything else is listed here in the categories that we normally show it. Um, as I always say, the salaries and the employee benefits make up about seventy-five percent of our total budget. Um, I think that's right where we should be. We're pretty much in line with New York State. Uh, the reason why salaries and benefits make up so much of our budget is that we actually employ people. We employ teachers to educate our students. That's our purpose. Um, I think it wouldn't be uh, very good to see a number uh, lower than that because that would mean we're spending uh, things for supplies or contractual expenses that may not be necessary. Again, this is really the same slide that we looked at at the last board meeting. Um, this slide has a slight change from the last board meeting. We did tell you that we want to have another capital outlay uh, project. Uh, the capital outlay projects are um, really good for the district because we can have one one hundred thousand dollar cash capital project every year. Uh, when we do have those projects and we stay within those parameters, we can receive all of the state aid, which for us is sixty-six point four percent of the total cost. We can receive all of that in one year. Uh, we are on a four-year plan where we have the uh, capital outlay project voted in the first year. The second year, we use to uh, plan it. The third year is when we would actually have the work done, so this project here uh, would uh, actually not be completed until two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven, but the next year, two thousand twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we we would receive all of that payback. And we're planning to have a district-wide security camera project. Uh, we wanna enhance enhance safety and security. Uh, we already do have a budget for cameras. This will just add to it. And after we have this project, if we feel that there's more areas or more cameras that we need, we'd be recommending another capital outlay project for the same thing.
Not tonight, but at some time, can we see what that, a little more detail on what that is?
Sure. Um, we are required to show the uh, budget in its three components, which is uh, program, admin and capital. Um, as you can see here, the total program budget is seventy-six point two seven percent of the total budget. Uh, the program portion of the budget is uh, basically our instruction and uh, transportation. Uh, and then anything that is uh, used in those areas like supplies and other contractual expenses. Administrative expenses are not just for administrators. It's uh, really anything for the administrative part of the of running the the district. So most of the costs that we have associated here at District Office are are considered administrative. Our legal fees are administrative uh, fees that we have for like our financial advisor and other professionals uh, sometimes fall into the administrative portion of the budget. And then capital is really our facilities and operations and anything we have to fund uh, capital projects like our debt service and that capital outlay project.
Where where does BOSI fall into that? Is that?
It depends. So part of BOSI's is capital, but most of it is program, and there's a small portion that is also administrative.
So it's split, okay.
So uh, this slide we showed last time, um, it's our two uh, propositions that we will uh, have on the ballot for buses. This is unique for us because normally we have just one ballot for uh, buses, but or one proposition, excuse me, for buses, but we are um, going to have two propositions, Proposition Two and Three on the ballot for buses. Uh, Proposition Two would be for seven uh, gasoline and diesel powered buses. These are buses that are, as part of our bus replacement plan, have been identified that need to be replaced. Um, those buses are getting more costly to maintain and um, and repair, so uh, they've been recommended by both our head bus or our head mechanic and also the uh, the supervisor of transportation for replacement. On the total cost, the gross cost of these seven buses is nine hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, but after state aid, uh, the cost to the district would be four hundred five thousand. We're also asking uh, for, or we'll have a proposition for nine EV or electric buses. Um, the total gross cost of the electric buses is four point five million dollars. Um, that's how the resolution reads. We have to get permission to um, have that gross amount on the uh, proposition, but it also shows that we are uh, planning to use MSBIP grants, which is an ICERTA grant. Uh, we qualify for two hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred fifty dollars a bus or two point three million dollars total. That would bring our upfront cost to two point two million. So the bus company that we use would actually give us a credit for the grant, knowing that it's coming, and we're gonna have to pay them the two point two million. Uh, we don't wanna borrow for that. We do plan to use capital reserve. Uh, that's part of the resolution too, because the voters have to approve whenever we use capital reserve. But then after that, we will also uh, submit our uh, purchases to the State Education Department and will receive aid back on it. Uh, because the grant that we're utilizing is a state grant, we're eligible to receive the state aid on the gross amount. So our state aid for bus purchases is currently fifty-eight point four percent, and that can be applied to the total amount before the grant of four point five million. So you can see in the calculation, the calculation actually shows we would uh, have been eligible for more than what we're actually going to get, but we can't get a a credit or get paid for buying the buses. But we're going to be able to, after state aid, uh, have uh, nine buses for no cost to the district. And again, these are two separate propositions. It's not either or. Uh, we would like the uh, community to vote on both of these propositions. If they both pass, we'll buy all of the buses. If one passes and the other doesn't, we are only eligible to buy other buses for the proposition that passes. Yeah, so we have the slides that we've gone over a few times before of all of the changes to the budget.
And nothing's changed on this?
Nothing's changed, no. Uh, we, uh, the last time we had the uh, text, we had a slide for each area. Um, those uh, slides are still available on Board Docs and our website, but we removed them from this presentation. Um, so uh, this slide here just shows where we are in the uh, in, yeah, in the process. We had originally planned to readapt our bus propositions tonight, but we did change that. Um, that's this, this is related to the reasons that the uh, board had to modify the agenda for tonight. Um, so there is no need to readapt the bus propositions. Um, I'll just say quickly that the reason we had uh, requested a change for the bus propositions is we were told by our bus sales company that their uh, company was planning to um, to uh, add the tariffs that they would be subject to, to the cost of the buses for their districts. Um, they are under New York State contract, and when they uh, reached out to the New York State Office of General Services about that, they learned that this is not a qualifying item to adjust their contract, and New York State is not allowing the bus companies to currently add the tariffs, um, even if they have to pay them to their contract amounts. Uh, they were told that that's something that would have to be negotiated in the next contract renewal. So because of that, we won't be subject to paying any tariffs, even if our bus sales company is at this time. So we um, removed that. We changed the budget uh, propositions back to the way it was, and we'll be asking the board to remove those uh, resolutions. So we have one more presentation before the night that the board would adopt the property tax report card, so that will be on April tenth. On April twenty-second, when you adopt the property tax report card, that's when the board is actually accepting the superintendent's uh, proposal for the budget. Uh, you already have a resolution that was passed at the last meeting to have a general fund budget. Um, but there is no dollar amount in it. The property tax report card um, has the actual uh, details of the budget, and we're required to file that with uh, the State Education Department after the board adopts that. Um, after the board adopts the property tax report card, we can schedule the budget hearing. Uh, that'll be here on May eighth at six PM uh, before the regular board meeting that day. And then our school budget vote and board member election is at Havlin Middle School on May twentieth from six AM to eight. So we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, looks good. I mean, no changes from last time, maybe, so.
No.
It's good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
All right. Moving on to 8.1, can I get a motion to open public participation?
So moved, Katie.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Board reminds speakers that the public comment portion of our meeting is only one item on a lengthy agenda. This segment of public participation will be limited to an overall time of 21 minutes. We ask that each speaker be concise and that the remarks be limited to three minutes each. We expect individuals participating in public comment to speak respectfully and courteously, modeling proper civility and decorum for our students. Would anyone like to address the board? Oh, I forgot to say, please provide your name and address when you tell, you live in, where you live when you reach the podium.
Thank you for that, Tony. My name is Octavia Wise-Valez. Address is 331 Shaw. Today was perfect timing coming here. I just wanted to shut line on what's going on in the Special Education Department. I have to first apologize to the teachers within the district because now I'm realizing that a lot of the issues are administration and the Special Education Department. It's not the teachers. The teachers are implementing what they've been told to do. So I'm apologizing to a lot of teachers for putting them in the middle of a lot of situations that's going on in Special Education Department. So I've been in disagreement with the district for a while now for both kids of mine. How much money does a district get for a classified child? That's one of the questions I'm going to ask. Why is it that my three-year-old non-verbal son gets to step into a school that does not have special related services according to his IP? Whose responsibility, whose responsibility was it to ensure that the school had the appropriate service to provide faith? It's completely illegal for a district to accept a school without services for a child and vice versa. Even more sadly, I had to reach out to the district to say that there was no services being provided. I guess they were waiting for my non-verbal autistic three-year-old son to let me know. Just recently, the board is trying to fight my request for a nurse being provided for transportation due to his rescue medication, which is Diabipam. What aid on the bus can give Diabipam seizures more than five minutes? Just this past week, the Special Education Department felt the need to delay my 15-days resolution meeting. I dropped a due process. And they felt the need not to respect the state law, the state regulations of the New York State Education Department. They laddied with my 15 days, which cost me a spot that could possibly provide my son faith. What showed me was that my child needs are not a concern to the district, even though we pay our taxes. Most might think that this is not a community problem, but it is. Many might, like, many might think that this problem doesn't hit home, but it does. I had a request, an independent educational evaluation for my 10-year-old daughter because the Special Education Department decided to declassify her against me and my husband wishes and my advocate that was there. Your tax dollars paid for the evaluation, which concluded that this is a new diagnosis. Prior to this, prior to the classification, my daughter has always been in a special education classroom with the speech-related services since kindergarten. Why did it take tax dollars to find out that this new disability and not the educators, not the educators that's been with her for all these years? That's a huge problem. We spent its tax dollars on things that our own people in our district and providers should be able to identify in our kids. So then I saw, perfect timing, 19.2%. Midstate is 17.8%. The national is 15%. Being that ours are higher, that's alarming percentage. That's an alarming problem we have here without kids in special education. Funny you say least restricted environment. That was one of the things that I'm frightened for in due process for my three-year-old son. I was in a least restricted environment, like as I said, that can possibly provide him with speech OT and speech OT and PT. What was the issue with giving him a restricted environment to provide faith, that what he's needed? The ICT, okay, the classrooms, oh, no park.
I'm just going to take the three minutes or just, you know, take a, you know, a little bit more, but you're gonna...
Okay, no park. ICT classrooms are about to hit max. General education classroom, they declassified her, they want to put a general education classroom with almost, with pretty much the same amount of kids in ICT with no teacher's aid. How is that going to work? How is that going to work for our children? But we closing our classrooms over here instead of bringing some kids over there or giving them the option to come over here, they can have more support unless they classroom space as well. I mean, more stu-, less students in the classroom space, so the teacher can provide more one-to-one attention. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Just so you know the process.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay. So I want, we listen to everybody and then at the end we'll address.
Yes.
Okay. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, at this time, we will close public participation. So thank you for your comments. So we typically, because it's related to a particular student, we're not going to, you know, kind of discuss the details here. But what I'm going to ask you to, you know, follow up and address her concerns, you know, privately. Because I don't think it's appropriate to talk about, you know, your children, you know, specifically in a public forum like this.
No, it's easy on every email.
Okay.
It is a huge problem and I will be at every meeting. I think that we're missing the trust. There's a huge trust between Special Education Department and community. There needs to be a liaison there. It's to the point that every meeting I have to go to, I have to record. That's how bad it is. That's how bad it is. We need a liaison. And you hit it right on the nail, Mr. Spencer. They're declassifying. I should not be able to have an independent evaluation come back to sex here.
So...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know. I know it's your first time, but you know, like, there is a second chance for you to talk later. But, you know, we just don't have a dialogue here like that and I, you know, it's your first time, so you know.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, you'll have another opportunity when we have the second public participation, if you want to do a follow-up or if you have more to read. So, okay. Okay. Moving on to 9.1, Board Subcommittee Reports and Professional Development Updates. Any subcommittees meet?
The Save Committee at this morning. There was, a lot of, they cover a lot of things in the morning. So I had written down a lot of, you know, highlights. A lot of it was, you know, already spoken about by, about the security of civilians. There was a lot of discussion about procedures regarding what to do when there's a bus accident because, to try to get more in line, more cohesive between the first responders and what they do and what the school district does. Discussions about increasing safety training for new staff members so that, you know, they know what we expect here and they know what to do in an emergency. Is anything else big?
One of the big things that we're talking about as a district is training in regards to reunification drills in case there is an emergency where we have to evacuate an entire building and unify students with families in a different location. So we're going to a training about that and then we'll start to plan on a small scale first and then grow from there.
I think the other thing that I do want to add is we are continuing to build relationships with our neighboring municipalities in terms of law enforcement. And so whenever there's an emergency situation in a particular location, whether it's the town of Hyde Park or the town of Bucipsi, we're just making sure that the communication lines are open so that in the event of an emergency, our building principals, our central office is made aware so that we can take the appropriate action. So that's something that both Melissa and I are working on.
Any other committees?
Next week, next week, the Dutch Scanning School Board is going to meet and Special Ed is going to meet on Monday. So maybe on Monday, we'll talk in general about a couple of things related to this.
All right. Where do we go? 9.2, Board Discussion Including Consent Agenda Items. Any discussion? So one of the things in the agendas, we're now going to use the SUPER eval tool for our board self-evaluations. So we probably have to have some education on that.
I thought you had it already.
We have it for, for the board?
No, we're going to coordinate that.
We do it.
Yeah.
We had, well, we had the education, just the refresher on the tool.
And how do you do it all?
For superintendent.
Yeah, yeah.
Where he didn't get anything from the board self-evaluation.
Sorry, sorry.
So I think a meeting on that would be good. And then also mentioning that there will be three seats available this year for Board of Education. So the current board members whose terms will expire are Ed's, Mine, and Katie's. So petitions are available online or from the district clerk. You need 31 qualified voter signatures required and the due date must be in by April 21st by 5:00 PM. If you're interested in running, anyone? There's applications at our office or online. Any other board discussions, consent agenda items? All right, moving on to 10.1. Can I get a motion? Well, so this is, no, we're not excluding it. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Second, Christine.
Yeah. Not a question, right?
No. So I just want to recognize before the consent agenda, two individuals here this evening. I first want to recognize and welcome Ryan Judge, who will be our new Chief of HR and Professional Development. And I also want to congratulate Principal DeLisandro for this evening. She will be recommended for tenure as an administrator in the district. Tremendous kudos to your accomplishments and all that you've done so far. And we're looking forward to seeing you grow as a leader in the district. So congratulations.
Thank you.
I could get the motion in a second, right?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. 11.1, Terms and Conditions for Employment, Chief of Human Resources and Professional Development. Can I get a motion to approve 11.1?
So moved, Margaret.
Second, Katie.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Welcome. Now it's official.
Thank you.
That was close.
11.2, Our Calendar Adoption at a Glan Student Attendance?
I just have one.
We, I need a motion in a second and then, and you can...
So moved.
Second in.
Okay, any discussion?
My discussion, because I was so excited. Are we done with the two-hour delays? Yes.
Okay. What did you think the most exciting thing?
I'm so happy. I'm sorry.
She asked if we're getting rid of two-hour delays.
Did schedule two-hour delays. Oh, my goodness.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, this is...
We're cheers of joy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I think we're not doing 11.3 and 11.4, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so 11.5, Revision of Legal Notice for the 2025-26 Budget Vote and Board Member Election, followed by the Annual Meeting of the District. Can I get a motion for 11.5?
So moved, Christine.
Second in.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to our second public participation, can I get a motion to enter public participation?
So moved, Katie.
Second, Margaret.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Same rules apply, three minutes, but we only have a total of 12 minutes. Would anyone like to address the board? All right, if not, we'll close public participation. Any other matters deemed necessary by the board? Nope. No need for a second executive session, right? Nope. All right, at... Can I get a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.